Well, thank you. It's a really exciting evening that we're able to share with the board and the community where we are with the strategic planning process. The Board of Education started this process with our consulting group Insight back in January. The Board created a mission vision for police and through our needs assessment identified six strategic priorities. Then handed it off to a steering committee of teachers, staff members, community members, that reported on the theory of action, the specific measurables underneath strategic priority, and the work that needs to happen as a result of the planning that the Board put together. I think it's really important to know that the Board had a lot of input on this process front end and now as the number coming back to you at the end of the process. You'll see that the core beliefs are listed here. You worked on it. It's really important to know that in red, our, some language of the steering committee suggested that you add in, I think it was community in a very broad sense initially when you created it. The steering committee felt that we were very specific about students, families, and staff and the broader community, that we could talk about each of those stakeholders, they would be positive. Those are the four core beliefs. I think there's a, it's really important to also know that the foundation of equity is throughout this plan and it started with the Board of Education. The mission statement is "We're building a culture of highest expectations and equity in which all students go academically and socially to the River community and our world." The mission statement, again, there is a suggestion here in red, and I'll explain that suggestion in a second. The mission statement reads "The Clark County School District has ambitions to create a community of learners and a diverse and cultural enrichmentality. We are committed to equity and excellence through the implementation of River standards in a safe and supportive environment on every campus, in every classroom, and for every child." We had a few English teachers on the committee. They felt that it was important to talk about the implementation of the River standards was most important. Think the Board talked about River standards in a very general sense. The English teachers said that you have to do something with those standards if you're really going to make the mission work. Again, the Board has been very focused on equity and making sure that equity is being applied throughout our school system. There are six strategic priorities. The first is academic growth. The second is social-emotional growth. The third is organizational effectiveness, making sure that there's systems, processes, and that we know where we're trying to go and what strategies we're going to use to get there. Fiscal health is number four, ensuring that we are stable, and that we're also investing in our facilities and being strategic in implementing funds. Professional capacity is the fifth. Cultivating a culture that nurtures continuous professional growth, capacity building, and communityality. And again, educational equity is the sixth priority. So again, this is the process. Here's just a list of the steering committee. It was a, it was a very good group of people who put a lot of time and thought into the work. They invested hours, not only during the planning time when we were together, but also offline and making sure that we had the right information. It was a very diverse group. We heard from all corners of our community. And they, again, I think they provided feedback even in the areas of the work that you provided to make sure that this was a living document. So the theory of action, again, you passed off, you passed off this work to our steering committee. And it was the responsibility of our group to come up with the rest of this plan. And so what we're posing in our theory of action is the following. Because the theory of action, let me before I jump into it, a theory of action statement should be an "if then" statement. If you do these things, then this should happen. That's what a theory of action is for any organization. And so in our case, the theory of action reads, "If the district deliberately works towards eliminating the marginalization of historically underrepresented groups through an organized or through an organizational emphasis of increasing student achievement for all students through rigorous standards-based instruction, consistent progress on student growth plans, consistent focus on the social-emotional development of our students, constant attention toward equity practices and accomplishment of the strategic plan, then we will increase student achievement and sustaining educational attainment in CCSD." In other words, that lays out the work. That becomes the theory of action in terms of what every teacher, every staff member, every custodian, every food service person and employee is focusing on as a school, as a school organization and school district. So our first priority is academic growth. You'll see that we have a goal statement and indicators of success. We really worked hard to make sure that our strategic plan just wasn't a group of words that would go up on a wall and we wouldn't be able to do anything with it, but it was actionable. It was something that would be measurable, not only for the Board of Education and working with me, their employees, but eventually everyone in the organization. That won't read all of these to you, but you will see that we identified the point of 12 percentage points of growth. In the area of ELA or reading, we are, we're currently about 30% of our students are proficient or distinguished. And math is a little higher, it's around 34%. And so we are suggesting in a two-year period, we will grow by 12%. That means we're growing by 6% each year. We came up with that, those percentage points by looking at our current level of performance. We also worked with a steering committee to develop our SMART goals. There was a committee of staff members, teachers, and principals who said, "We believe we can achieve 12%." There will be some in the organization, in the community who will say, "That's a large number." But keep in mind, if we achieve that number, we're still short of 50% of our students being proficient or distinguished. And so while the number may sound large on the surface, it is something that we have to strive for. Strategic plan or strategic priority number two, the social-emotional growth. We talked about this before in a Board meeting. I think Mr. Davis has brought this up. We've committed to a socio-emotional learning framework called CASEL, C-A-S-E-L, CASEL. It has five core competencies. And working with Dr. Dawn Myers, we have identified that we can take a look at the Georgia Student Health Survey because we don't want to give our students more surveys. We don't want to take more instructional time away to test them and gain data from them. But we are obligated to provide the Georgia Student Health Survey. We can do a cross-swalk of questions from that survey that ties back to the CASEL core competencies to see if students are growing or not in the area of social-emotional growth. We've talked about this before, but the school district here in Clark County is very happy and proud to be partnering with College Board and Abbott to do a five-year meta-commission study of current students who are in eighth grade to see if they're growing and their own management of their thinking. We believe that attendance rates and instability, disciplinary rates, is also indicators of if we are growing from a social-emotional standpoint. Again, it would have been easy just to have that goal statement and to stop there. We felt that we needed to go deeper and truly be strategic. Organizing, our strategic priority number three, organizational effectiveness. The indicator of success is to ensure that each department will develop and implement core processes aligned to systems thinking and that we regularly monitor efficacy of the core processes, at least by June 2019, and continue to do so. What that means is that we should have a process for everything that we do in this organization. And you should be able to monitor and check back if that's happening. So for example, we've talked about the fact that in our custodial area, it would be, it would be helpful if we had a checklist, just like you see in hotels or in restaurants where certain hours of the day, someone is checking off and saying, "I cleaned this bathroom. I cleaned this cafeteria." And to have someone responsible and accountable for that work is what A is saying. And then B is create an organizational dashboard and document the growth of our organizational KPIs or key performance indicators by November. It's important if we are organizationally effective that we have this up and going and be available not only internally but externally. Fiscal help, you'll see the goal there and the indicators of success is maintaining a fund balance of 15%. We're currently at 18% achieving balanced budget annually or seeing key performance indicators established by business services and district services and complete an analysis of efficient facility and space usage of all schools and buildings. That'll tie into the other topic that I have later this evening. But being more strategic and very focused on where we want to go, not only in today's environment, but long-term. Yes, ma'am? We feel that these indicators are actually more tangible for the public. I think having a clean audit is a good thing for us internally, but knowing that you have a fund balance of at least 15%, you have a balanced budget, then you're making sure that you're handling the money given to you by the taxpayers efficiently and effectively. The audit piece is very important to us as well, but that's more internal to make sure that we are following proper protocols. We have three different goals under professional capacity. This was a very lively subgroup of our steering committee. The first was around professional learning. And we talked about the fact that professional learning helps us achieve our academic performance. We wanted to bring everything, if you notice in the goal statements, everything ties back to growing academically by 12% in two years. And what we wanted to do here is to build professional capacity by having teachers lead professional development. I'm also proud of our subcommittee that worked on this area and that indeed we declare that there will be certain amount of time for district-level professional development, school-level professional development, but we also stay clear and allow teachers to have time for their professional reflection. And I think that's a pretty bold and clear message that we want teachers to reflect and have their own time to prepare for teaching.
Do you have a sense of what that currently is?
So under a 12 or 13-day professional development, professional learning calendar, it will come out to five days for district, work four days for the school level, work in four days for teachers.
And what has it been in terms of percentages in the past?
I don't know what has been in the past. If you remember when we passed the calendar for next year, I worked with a group from our teacher advisory board to create more teacher reflection time for them next year. I don't know what we've been in the past in terms of this type of percentage. The feedback I've received from the teachers was that it was not in the area of a third, almost a third of that time being given to teachers to control and to decide what they were going to do during the day. And that's since that 31% is off limits from administrators. We have to make sure that teachers have that time and they're able to do what they need to do now. For example, next year, one of the professional reflection days will be that Friday before kids come back in January. It's that, there's a couple of days when we come back in January and there's a Friday where we've designated that as a professional reflection day for teachers. Just to get the grades done, to come back and get back into, into the groove of work. It could mean that a principal will provide breakfast and give an overview of welcome back. But then, once that has taken place and you fed your staff, principals understand that it's time for us to then pivot, allow them to be professionals. The second goal under professional capacity is communityality. And what we want to do here is to allow, to allow our teachers to find ways to work with one another and to push one another and to grow from an efficacy standpoint. You have to have teamwork to truly grow in making this work happen. And so you will see under the indicators of success, it's making sure the professional collaboration is happening in a way where teaching is not an isolated practice. It's not an independent practice, but it's a team effort in making sure the students work. And then the third goal is to recruit, hire, retain. We take it very seriously because you'll see some of the conversation that the Board has been having all year in regards to hiring mission-driven, diverse staff is embedded in this, in this goal. Having a formal induction program and making sure that we retain mission-driven and diverse faculty is really important to us.
Yes, ma'am. So what's a good target for retention in terms of the school district? Since I'm still learning, what's good? Because obviously 100% is a little too isolated.
Yes, ma'am.
But you also, there are also other numbers that aren't good. And so leaving out retirements, for example, what is a good number of resignations? A weird bit of a...
Yes. I think a district like Clark County is very difficult to make that prediction because we are in a university town where a lot of people, it's their first job and they still taught here. Right this year, we had 200 resignations and over retirements. So we had 200 people who left the organization. So in our opinion, if we can reduce that number by at least 5%, we were moving in the right direction.
How many certi-, what was the other question? I'll have to defer to, yes, sorry. 150. Mr. Davis?
On the previous slide, you talked about teacher leadership. Is that, I'm sorry, you talked about teacher leadership. Is that formalized in some way or is it just kind of informal? Because there, you know, some schools have formalized, you know, teacher leaders.
It's a great question. Through our transformation with the school growth plan process and establishing goals for each school, there's a school improvement leadership team that's been established in each of our 21 schools. There's representatives from each grade level or department on those school improvement leadership teams. We want to make sure that those individuals are not only leading on that team, but then are taking their skills that are given back to their teams. And so formally, yes, really, we're schools will be able to identify who's moving their team in the right direction, who's analyzing student data and making sure that students are growing and who isn't making that work happen.
Over time, can you see that being compensated in some way or...
I think we have, we hopefully are behind in not compensating members of the school improvement leadership team. It will be something that we'll definitely think about and try to find funds and fiscal support. Yes, ma'am?
I'm not asking about the term. We do currently manage and actually track and control the district. That new, I don't have to give a fair reaction for it, so if we can save school level, you know, work that term. It's like, maybe we can assess what the power is and get that back to us and follow the language.
Number, or letter C is going to be very detailed. And so part of it will be asking, if you read the language of it, did we retain mission-driven and diverse staff? And so asking individuals, were you aligned with the work? Were you aligned with the equity work that the Board and the district has said they want to dig into? I think that's the first level of the conversation, right? Because there will be some people who will leave, and when they leave, they will say, "I was not aligned with what the Clark County School District is going to work on." And from that perspective, from an employment standpoint, that's okay. That's okay that they made that professional decision. So what we want to do is make sure that individuals who aren't aligned to the work, are we able to retain them? And if we are able to retain them, that's a step in the right direction. And so, yes, if you're asking us to drill down by school level?
Yes, for sure. Another thing we're going to do is share that we have the whole system.
Yes, ma'am. We're captured. Thank you. And then you have your six strategic priority of educational equity. In terms of access to educational programming, you'll see under indicators of success, we want to minimize pull-out programming. And we also want to ensure equitable access to gifted, talented, and AP or advanced placement programming for underrepresented students by 6% annually. This is probably the most bold of, the most audacious of the goals, right? Because it's taking equity and actually putting it in action. And this is the reason why we felt that it was important for us to structure the strategic plan this way where it wasn't just words, but there's action that everyone is being held accountable for. So access to educational programming was number one. The second is student discipline. And that we want to reduce out-of-school suspension rates for students of color. We want to reduce out-of-school suspension rates for special education students. And we want to increase documented communication between classroom teachers and families by 6% as a baseline. We believe that if the classroom teacher touches base with a family before a student gets totally out of control, the need for that student and that family to engage administration goes down significantly. And it also ties back to relationships. And so that's the reason why maybe you see as there are indicators.
On the previous slide, I mean, you can decrease disproportionality in one of two ways by bringing sort of the bottom up and the top down. So is there a way to kind of talk about this goal or articulate that our interest here is bringing more people to a higher place as opposed to the opposite?
Yes, and we talked about that long, for a long time. And that's why I think the indicators of success are structured the way that they are. So minimizing pull-out means you take your baseline and you minimize how many students are being pulled out for that programming now. Ensuring equitable access doesn't mean that you are bringing down everyone to uplift other groups that have been below. It just means that you're providing access to every, for underrepresented groups in particular, by 6%. If we would have said just increase, and that's where we really struggle. If we would have said increased representation of underrepresented students by 6%, that could have meant that from a statistical standpoint, you're bringing down white students. That's not what this says. It just states clearly, we want to make sure that underrepresented students are being provided access. It's also important to note that it's not about race in many of the, it could mean girls in certain, it could be a gender issue in some cases. It could mean a lot of different things. And so we were very purposeful in the language that we used with B. So hopefully, we tried to avoid what the, we tried to avoid the image that people are thinking that we're bringing down one group to uplift another. That's not the case. What we're trying to do is put the tie for all, so then all boats are rising high.
And this is where that equity is a non-zero-sum concept, you know, kind of plays out.
And it was, but it's difficult to write the language, the indicator in that way to make sure that everyone sees it that it's a zero-sum game. It's not about bringing some group down or bringing another group up.
I think your microphone picked up.
Did it go off? Maybe it did. It's good. I'm okay. All right. Yes, ma'am?
Can you go to the next slide?
Sure.
So we ran into some conversations with our administration about the disproportionality of, our discipline disproportionality. And so administrators heard or felt told that, or maybe they were told, I don't know. I just don't want to be accused of it. To not write up certain students or to not discipline certain students so that we could eliminate or reduce the gap in disproportionality. And this is a huge conversation and it centered around the Cedar Schultz incident, but that's when it was really kind of brought to the surface. Can you speak to indicator success A and how that is not what, we're not trimming back in that direction?
Thank you for that opportunity. We wrote A and B, A and B in particular.
A and B, yes.
A and B with that in mind. We do not want to send a message to our administrators that if a student deserves a suspension, that they're not suspended. But research shows that you can suspend a student and still keep them in school. I look at the administrative team at Cedar Schultz who've come up with a very creative way of suspending students, yet keeping them in class next year, or not class, but in school next year, I should say. And so it's not a, I don't want to call it an in-school suspension, but it's truly a suspension place where students have, are being, they're paying the consequence for their behavior, yet they're still in school to receive their education. And so that's why we need... I'll try to get through this and then maybe we'll change them better later. So we had that in mind as always that this should not be of all withholding disappointment if a student deserves. I hope that answers your question.
It does, yeah. I just, um...
Because I want to be clear, that's not our message. If a young person deserves a suspension, they should be disciplined. But we also believe that an out-of-school suspension should be the...
The most severe of the disappointment that you provide. There are ways that we can still provide educational service to a young person in school. And so in that case, the principal is still sending a message that discipline is necessary, but the student is receiving an educational service.
For microphone set. And then goal, goal number three under strategic priority six, educational equity. We clearly state that we understand that it's critical that we have to accelerate the learning for historically marginalized families and students. And so while we talk about a 6% annual growth, we are suggesting that for students who aren't following those underrepresented groups, that we will add an additional 6% for them. So in essence, we need to grow by 24%. That's our goal for underrepresented families and students. And I say families and students because the families are also impacted when there isn't growth for their young people. And so we're suggesting accelerated growth on our educators of college and career success and also Georgia high schools. Thank you. That's the, that's the strategic plan that we've worked on. Again, I can't thank the none of the steering committee that helped us. They took their work very seriously and that work actually started with the Board. I remember in January where the Board said, "We want to make sure that you have a very large, diverse group" as part of that steering committee. They dug in and really did good work for us. And so that's, that's where we are.
Can you speak for a minute about how that, how that group, the leadership on that group came about?
We, we look for diverse people in many different areas and people who had different opinions and thoughts and perspectives on the school system. And we brought them together. We invited them to be part of the process. They were willing to give up a portion or all of their day for two days. And we shared with them that they were charting a course, a new course for our school district from a strategic planning perspective. I enjoy strategic planning. It was, it was good that we had Dr. Thomas come on board, which he did. So Dr. Thomas and I served as a good, great team in making sure that the work was accomplished. Much of this work was done locally. Once you turn it over to us with the steering committee and their voice was, their voice is very clear in all of these statements. But we also want it to be statistically and from an accountability state, very sound. And so you will see those goal statements are our SMART goals. And so you will see those goal statements are smart goals. By a certain time, you will be able to measure some. And then we also have indicators of success. Typically, in strategic plans, people will create a goal statement that isn't time-bound. There isn't any results that you're looking for. And there are no indicators to determine if you're moving in the right direction or not. So we took a different path with this plan.
In terms of being time-bound, so is there, should we anticipate a year from now, for example, there's some time, a check-in, right? That says we go through the same goals again, and here's how we're doing on A, this one, here's how we're doing on this one. With the numbers that are indicated.
I'm really excited in being here for almost a year now because instead of talking about the, instead of me talking about what we don't have in place, we can start talking about what we can do. I want to thank the board because you took a leap of faith in engaging around balanced governance candidly. And I've said this before publicly, balanced governance doesn't work unless you have a strong strategic plan. And that check-in has to happen more than just annually. It should happen at least semi-annually, if not quarterly. And there should also, also should be visuals from a dashboard perspective where not only the board, but the public can measure and see where we're moving based on this plan. And so that's our intent to continue to build this out. This is just the beginning of the work now. Now we have to ensure that we are, we're very public and accountable about what we said we were going to do and provide you governance opportunities to see if it's happening or not. At the same time, it becomes the work, right? So it can't deviate from this. This has to be our focus. And if you take a look at this document, it's very student-driven from an achievement standpoint, but it also addresses the whole child. It also addresses our organization in terms of how efficient we are, how we're using our funds. I think it's very, it's comprehensive in terms of what we want to become as an organization. So it will be more than annual. We're collectively not doing our governance work if that's not, if that's not what we're constantly focusing on. If you remember from the training for Dr. Tom Osborne, he would say, "As a board, you're not checking in on these components on a monthly basis in your meetings. Something's going to fall." And so I would hope that as, now we can dig deeper into balanced governance by having this structured.
Dr. Mead, in terms of state accountability, I know we're focusing on the milestones. The state uses other indicators too. And I'm just wondering if they kind of, everything we've got listed here kind of meshes together.
Actually, it does. You will note that we're looking at other measures such as our NWA MAP scores, our college and career success indicators also talks about the investment that you voted on last month around our standards-based assessments that the curriculum coordinators gave and spoke to you about. Hopefully, as a board, you're starting to see things kind of come together now, right? So you approved the NWA MAP assessment. You approved the standard-based assessment. Actually, with your approval of that, now we can measure to see if we're growing students academically and also from a social-emotional standpoint. So everything that has been presented to you this year, you should see it embedded back into this work to see if it's working. There should be constant program evaluation. And if things are not well, we need to fix it. If it is growing well, then you replicate it and you expand and grow it. The other component, Mr. Davis, of your question, which is a really good one, is that's the benefit of being a charter system in school district. And so there's a lot of talk right now of providing charter systems with the ability to have an alternative testing tool. And if you remember last, I think it was last week maybe, that we were here for a meeting, the more we can get away from talking about the milestones and talk about other measures, not to overtest our kids, but to have different types of measures where it's just not based on a summative assessment at the end of the school year, the more likely we can move away from a deficit-based approach to an asset-based approach of looking at our kids. In other words, just because you don't do well on milestones doesn't mean that that's the end-all of growth. Maybe a student grew in NWA MAP scores, they grew with our standard-based assessment scores, maybe it didn't come out in milestones, but the more we can show growth, the better. You will see that in your consent packet, we want to move forward with creating a student growth model where families will have, what I like to call is the equivalent of an academic baseball card for a student. Where when a teacher sits down with their families, there's a card that can show, here's who Greg is, and here's where we believe he will grow this year. And here are all the, this is what he looks like academically, from a behavioral standpoint, here's his interests, and is he growing? That will become a much more valuable tool to teachers than what we currently do in our profession, which is to say, go to their Q folder and find out about Greg by reading the Q folder. If we can create a model like we've presented in the consent agenda, I think we're really starting to transform how we talk about student growth in Clark County.
I have another question. So you mentioned the charter, and I know you had members of LSGTs on the committee. So can you talk a little bit about how the role of LSGTs and our relationship there in the goals that we talked about?
When you talk about local school governance team, their number-one priority, as I agree with the charter system, is ensuring that there's growth happening on the individual school growth plan. And so if you are a member of a local school governance team, it's your responsibility to make sure that there's growth happening for that individual school in what they've identified as their growth goals the next two years. And so in many ways, they're replicating the work that you will be doing at the district level, the system level, with the system strategic plan. So in essence, a school growth plan is the equivalent of a strategic plan for a school. That's the role of LSGT. And they have to make sure that they're meeting with their building principal on a monthly basis and asking the same questions that now you should ask a MIA, where's the progress? How are we moving forward? What are the action steps that we're putting in place to make this happen in terms of the goals that we all share? And if you remember when Dan Weber made the statement that in many ways, a local school governance team is the equivalent of a board of education, and the principal is the equivalent of a superintendent in that local situation, that's the primary work. I think we didn't talk about that role during the first rollout of training, but that is, that's the work. The work is to make sure that there's growth happening for the school based on those school growth plans. And so going back to what we talked about earlier, when we started the process of developing the school growth plans, that is, that's the primary function and focus of a local school governance team.
Dr. Mead, finally, one Jared asked. So, I mean, these are very specific goals that we established for the district. And it's fair to say that the local school governance teams will, the expectations that they embrace these goals and then help work with the central leadership and board to carry on those goals. I mean, is that, I'm just trying to understand the...
No, sir. It's a great question. While we were developing these goals and working with our steering committee, building principals were working with their teams to develop their two-year school growth plans. And so those two-year school growth plans are very specific. They're very detailed and they're very measurable. And so if you remember from the presentation from the curriculum coordinators, that plan to study and adjust cycle is something that the board and I will be working on, and at the school level, a local school governance team and a principal should be working on as well. That, it's very subtle. It's, I appreciate when people walked up to me all this year and would say, "So what are you going to do? What's the big splash?" And if we're doing, if we're building the organization appropriately, there shouldn't be a big splash. It should be, we're doing work differently and we're being more strategic about the work. And so in a very succinct way I can share with you, this is doing work very differently in Clark County than what we've done before. Maybe we've done it like this in the past, and I've had principals say, under prior leaders, it was this specific, and they are embracing this opportunity to go back to this work. But in the last three to four, five years, this hasn't been the way that the school system has worked. This is not the way that we approached the work. Building principals are excited about this, this approach, and it's very, it's locally driven because each principal worked with their team to develop their own school growth plans. And now they know that the primary function of their relationship with their LSGT is to provide feedback on if the school is making progress on that work. Again, I can't emphasize enough, that's the power of the local school governance teams and charter system.
Okay, I guess, you know, specifically, let's say teacher retention. You know, for, when I first got on the board, we were given information that related to teacher retention, but it's always for the whole district. And it wasn't until much further, and I've been with the board a couple of years, that we finally got, that broken down by individual schools. We didn't know what to do with that information once we had it, but is that in terms of what we're given on the dashboards and what's shared with the public, it will, these goals will be school-specific. Am I right?
Some of these goals, when themselves being school-specific, some do not. The ones who, which indicators are school-specific, we'll make sure that they are. And once we have that dashboard up and going, if you want us to drill deeper, we can.
Thank you for that report. And I'd like to publicly also thank the Strategic Planning Committee for the House of the Board for all the work that they put in. This is good for the boards. We appreciate that very much.
I'd like to just again thank you and recommend, because I get feedback from two people that work on this plan, they will wear it on the process, about ownership of it.
Great. The next item is the Superintendent's Board of West Broad School Property.
Thank you, sir. I do have an update, and I'll just kind of read off of what I have here. The future use of West Broad school property is complex. There are competing internal and external interests in the property, and they all have merit. They all have strong merit. My role and responsibility as superintendent is to ensure that all the facilities in the district are maximized for student use and to advance the district strategic plan. So when you look at the strategic priorities of one, academic growth, two, social-emotional growth, and four, physical health, it's really important for us to make sure that we're keeping that in mind as we continue this conversation. From a long-range facility perspective, I think the West Broad property is important. But what I have found is that there are other competing facility, school attendance zone, and long-range planning issues that must be addressed. Let me just give you a few. We have limited seat capacity for early childhood education opportunities. And I remember vividly Mr. Payne asking the question, "How many students have signed up for early childhood education? How many seats do we have?" And so we know that we don't have as many seats that we need to serve our community. We have an imbalance of student population between certain schools in the district. Mainly, when you look at Cleveland Road School, Whitehead Road School, and Old Thor, there's an imbalance there. And the question I have is, what's the interconnectedness between that imbalance and school seat? Which the board had a plan of building a school seat that would have potentially balanced things out. You made different plans and you built a larger Whitehead Road School, for example. And then consequently, you built a larger Old Thor Avenue School. How does the use of the Whitehead Annex impact the space capacity of Whitehead Road School? What's the impact of the 19P ESO Attendance Option Zone and its impact and effect on Gaines Elementary School? As families who live in that zone, I think Mr. Davis brought this issue up to me early in the fall, as I was still trying to figure out where things were located in the community. He said, "Well, how does that impact Arnett Shoals with Davis and Gaines?" And I think that's something we need to look at. At the completion of SPhas 5, what's the future of the old Gaines School? What happens there? And how do we prevent what happened with Barber Street School? And frankly, what's happened with West Broad in terms of having a long-range plan of investing in a facility that may not become a schooling? How do we assist in accommodating the program expansion of the Atkins Community Career Academy? We have a very talented and gifted CEO in Lawrence Harris. We have an ambitious board of the Career Academy that wants to continue to see growth. And frankly, we have a business community that wants us to continue to find pathways for young people to complete their high school education in our district and then go on to the workforce if that's what a young person chooses to do. How do we help facilitate that expansion? And then finally, the district offices. We're currently using 60,000 square feet of space between this building and the Whitehead Road Annex. If we have parameters of needing at least 60,000 square feet, if we have a parameter of having, needing at least 250 parking spaces, if we have a parameter of needing at least one multi-purpose community room that can meet the capacity of 100 adults and have that room converted to board meeting space, a professional learning space, a community meeting space for groups that want to meet there? If that's the prerequisite, then how does all this work together? And so as I've gained feedback from community members, as I've listened to the board, what I'm finding is that you can't do one of these things in isolation from the other. That it all ties together. And so to that end, what I would ask the board to do is to give me some time. Give me some time to work with an internal committee of administrators and people who are impacted by all those different items that I referenced. At some point in the process, we will engage external stakeholders for feedback and input. But allow us to work through all of these competing interests that we have as a school system to accomplish what you just saw on the screen in terms of the strategic plan of being very strategic and long-thinking from a planning perspective in terms of what we want to do with all our facilities and what's our needs for students and student learning. I don't think we've taken the step back just to have that conversation because all of these different things that I just cited to you are, they're holdovers from years of leadership challenges and other challenges that the district was unable to get to, really hard work but important work that needs to happen. And so we will be using this summer to dig into this work and to really think it through and to kind of lay it out the way I've just done. It's taken me some time to just step back and not get honed in and locked in on one issue of what I believe to be a very layered issue and a very complex and complicated challenge that we have for us in terms of not only West Broad, but all those different components that I shared with you. So that, that's my plan. I would hope to come back to the board in the fall with a... with a comprehensive plan to address all of these different issues. But what I'm finding is if I talk and try to address the district office issue in isolation from West Broad, in isolation to school C, in isolation to other issues, then it feels like we're not being very, again, not to beat up this word, but strategic and long-range thinking. I think we have to be, we have to just be more disciplined in our approach, and that's what I would like to do.
Great. Questions? Go ahead, Dr. Knox. So, thank you, Dr. Knox. One thing I want to be clear about is the evolution you're thinking of this, because if I remember correctly, we were talking about owing it to the community to have a vote by the 14th of June. And so can you kind of give an explanation for why it's now going to come back in the fall?
Because when I think about all the other issues that I've been working on in isolation, I do see a connection with the West Broad. If you remember, I shared with the board that I wanted to come to you and talk to you about the long-range facility. And I haven't forgotten about that. What I'm realizing is that the use of the West Broad building and long-range facility planning, and one issue that I didn't mention here is the use of modular and portable classrooms. You're going to be asked to act on the use of portable classrooms at Chase Street School on the 14th. That's continuing to grow. It's interesting that our Citizens Council Oversight Committee, that works with all of our facilities, has asked the question of me of, "Well, why didn't we have so many portable?" I don't think it's due to poor planning. I think that we have seen a shift in our population, which is another issue that I didn't mention here. That's how complicated this is. Historically, we've always been about a 12,000-student school district. We are right now at 13,600 students. And so there's an increase. We're seeing a population increase. How we adjust to it is really critical. So really good question, Dr. Knox. I think my evolution of thinking is, as I've really reflected on trying to be thoughtful and giving a good answer to the West Broad issue. And you start playing out all of these different components of, "What about the old Gaines people? What about district offices? What about portables, portable classrooms?" And I believe we need to all step back and look at all of this in the totality of how are we programming, how are we programming student academic options for kids?
And hopefully, we're going to say, I really appreciate that, such that we want to have the comprehensive that's exactly who we are, where we are, so we just need to come to this one. We really need that differentiation, the baseline of that who we are. And we should work towards it and grant to us.
And I know you can't see them, first of all, or anything at this point, but I want to talk just a bit about, you know, some of the board's interest and, you know, the folks knows and kind of thought about some uses there. Obviously, there's lots and lots of community interest and input there. And while, you know, community interest doesn't dictate what we do with buildings, it certainly is not relevant to what we do with buildings. Do you have a sense for what that engagement might look like?
I want to frame this world first with our committee, I think. First with our committee and then impacted and working with external boards. I want to frame it in terms of what are we doing to use our facilities for student program? And that's my, that's what you hired me to do. That I think once I start venturing off in other areas, I'm not being very helpful to you as a board. And what I'm realizing is that there are student programming issues that we have. Let me give you, again, just to show you how the dominoes fall. There is a belief that if the early childhood, four-year-old kindergarten, pre-kindergarten classes were pulled out of some of our elementary schools, that would open up more space, which would then eliminate the need for portable classrooms. So now if you have more early childhood education classrooms in other places, maybe now the domino falls in a different perspective, in a different place. And so I want to stay focused on student program. I'll give you another thing. Every time in the board and the Career Academy, they're holding me to it. I have made a commitment to them that if we can find programming and we have student interest, we need, we being the district office staff, we need to leave this facility in the name of letting students explore career pathways. But that has a trickle effect, that has a trickle-down effect to everything that we do. So the first priority, Mr. Bybee, will be, are we properly using all of our space for student program? And I appreciate the comment that Ms. Davis made. I've used this first year to rebuild with our team, and a lot of people put a lot of work into this. We've rebuilt our instructional infrastructure. Now it's time to figure out where do we place and where do we teach those people in terms of facilities? That's something that I think we just haven't been as comprehensive and strategic about. I think it was Ms. Williams that made the statement a week or two ago of, "Why did West Broad deteriorate in terms of its standing? Why weren't we putting money into the building annually, even if you weren't using it?" I am aligned with that type of thinking. So I've already started to think now, so what do we need to do with old Gaines? It just, we can't just not let it, we can't just let it sit there. We have to have some type of vision for how we're going to continue to maintain it. I came in at the end of the process of Barber Street School and what happened there, the stories that I received was that there wasn't a lot of money put into Barber Street. And eventually, the roof started caving in. And it wasn't, the upkeep wasn't where it should have been. I believe that even when a school district owns a building, you still, even if you don't have programming in it, you have an obligation to keep it functioning. Because you never know when the children in your instructional program will be. And so I, we just need time to step back and to be proactive in thinking that way. But it will, the work will be in the name of where do we have needs from an instructional standpoint? And how can we relieve space for our teachers and for our schools from a program standpoint, District Five? Because when I think about what's happening across Clark County, there's, we need to step back and be more comprehensive in terms of how we use space.
Best part of that, yeah.
Sure. And I think I've said this before. I've been in this community and also been affiliated with this district for 23 years. And I can recall when the first Speedloss was launched, which was in 1990. See, the shingles are part of that. I'm saying all of that to say that it's portable. I don't like it. And I saw it to a campus. But, and it's my belief, we are never going to get rid of totally, get rid of portable. The reason to growth in this community, and also, we live in a transient community. And from year, from school year to school year, some schools don't ever know what population of students we're having. I know Dr. May's mentioned about a week ago that Clark Central want to have 1,800 students for the next school term. And you have to take into consideration the little state. Yeah, yeah, portable, and I saw it to a campus, but it's just my belief that we're not going to ever get rid of portable. When we started out with the first Speedloss, and I said to the Speedloss committee, "You know, you need to start pushing at that door." And the Speedloss that, the past Speedloss, we going to get rid of portable. It never happened. And here we are in Speedloss Five. Thank you very much.
Sarah.
If I can just get back to the whole thing that you said. We've already done, you know, it's been years and years and years and years and years, not consistent, but inconsistent conversations in Clark on the West Broad building, so much so that I can't even remember all of it. I mean, I can't even begin to remember all of the different conversations that were thrown. So I've asked myself, and I've talked with a couple of folks, I've been like, "Why is this decision so hard? Why is this such..." If you get down to the nuts and bolts of this, why is this so impossible to move forward with? And I think you nailed it. I think it's so hard because it was an isolated conversation, not in totality. And so I really appreciate the fact that we're going to take a look at it in a holistic way with space across our district and these conversations that we've been having sporadically. We're synthesizing all the conversations that we've been having about space. But my worry is that we're going to hit the rewind button on some of the work that's like, we're going to redo the work that's already been done, which it needs to be redone, it needs to be redone, and we need to redo it. But at some point, we can't keep coming back and having the same battles, the same conversations, the same struggles that we, you know, we've had for years. We can't, you know, are we going to go back to doing the work we did as a board? Are we going to go back to engaging the community? Are we going to go back? You know, I just, I just hope that taking this information that you're proposing and synthesizing it with the work that's already been done will move us into a forward motion and not hit the rewind button. The other thing is, not that I want a controversial policy online, but we probably need to have a vague and building policy in our policy manuals. And we don't have that. And so anyway, we have that to our policy agenda potentially.
I'm going to come in along those lines. In our policy, one of the items, and I don't know if we took it out or not, but the property committee was to annually evaluate the property made in the Clark County School District. As long as I've been on the board, that has never been done. And there's some things that need to be addressed, and we should be physically doing that as part of our responsibility. And I hope that did not come out of that policy, that the policy is certainly needed to be.
Thank you. And not to get too far ahead on all this, but I think that one of the few things that we can look forward to, this is, it's going to take a while to do this. And so could you just give a very high-level overview of how we're going to do this? I'm kind of interested in what the possible funding mechanisms might be. Not to the tail, but just, do I need to get out my credit? I think that's what I'm asking here.
It's going to be expensive. I think that's why, I'll tie your question, Dr. Knox, with Ms. Ellis's question. We don't want to hit the rewind button either. But I think putting everything on paper and having a comprehensive report of, "This is where things stand," not only with buildings, but also attendance zone areas, and how that's impacting buildings and the use of portables, is really going to be important. In terms of cost, let me just, I think this question's come up with the board before. A very high level of just the West Broad cost. Currently, West Broad has $32,800 square feet. The question was posed to me, and maybe it was last week by Ms. Williams, of, "So how much will it cost to just make that building operational again?" We're making an estimate, but if you just take $200 based on the state of that building right now, $200 per square foot, that's $6.5 million right there. If you have to now start doing site work and look at storm water management, now you're talking another million to a million and a half dollars. If you, if you, there was this thought at some point under my predecessor that that could be a district office, you would have to have a two-story parking facility. Typically, that goes for $20,000 per slot or space. If you need 250 spaces, that's a $5 million facility. And so those are the types of exercises we will start going through. That was just one of many. We have to do the same exercise with old Gaines. We have to do the same exercise for figuring out where do you place district office, the district office if the Career Academy is growing the way we want it to grow. We'll bring all of those costs to the board to look at. It's going to, I think, one of the reasons why, and I hate to use this phrase, but I think one of the reasons why this conversation in its totality has been kicked on the road, the can's been kicked on the road, is because of the price tag. And how much this may potentially cost, if we're comprehensive about addressing these issues.
In transparency and my experience, I came on board in 2012. I sat in a meeting as a board member where this facility was my boss for that too. Every single building, every single portable, the unused building. So at that time, I think we had two properties, I had some additional properties, and people were interested in participating, that we actually had them. So that information's here, just for example. And that is what I'm looking for, a new structure. It's rather perfect. We can all, if we gather, then we kind of better be, we're going to go. And I don't think that's such, you know, other people have an interest in acquiring a property that we already see that working.
So the four people you're talking about are different than the three professors?
Yes, in addition to, we get all of that expertise. Yes, sir.
And the, and the, and the, and is that goes, that is a $38,000 price tag?
Yes, sir. And in fact, to separate that, it's $28,000. Basically, we pay $28,000 for each behavior analyst. So for every 20 hours of that board certified behavior analyst, it costs the district $28,000. To put that in perspective, if we were to hire a paraprofessional, the average rate I believe we're using these days will be $38,000. And so, and that is an individual that does not have that same level of expertise. The other, I think, critical piece to this is that because we've watched this partnership so closely, the response that we're getting from students and the progress that they're making, it has just been exciting to watch. And so, you know, we actually, they did a presentation, I think in February, where they looked at the overall, what have you done? You know, what have we gotten for you of the money? And literally broke it down so that they have been in 42 classrooms, and this was through the past model, three columns in seven of our elementary schools, 42 classrooms. They have provided direct teacher training on a one-on-one basis to 19 of our teachers, and they have worked with 71 of our kids. Now, these are our most intensive kids. And the most exciting piece about this is that out of that set, out of the 71 students, all five of them were able to join the homeschool, and like, with no other changes. We got them back on track, and so in a, as we really explored ways to push and leverage resources to students, it was a very successful model, and students basically look at achievements. So we're just looking to take what we've done, watched and part with, and, you know, had a place in the past, and just reframe it a bit so that it aligns with principal recommendation as well as another view for how we can add another layer support for our students.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I have another question. Do, because I'm very enthusiastic about what is going in this direction, but I have a lot of questions. And I don't know whether to just pull the, pull it from consent and raise my questions next week, but that would be more appropriate, I think.
Yeah, and specifically, maybe if you, if we were to link to, either about this contract specifically or about that in overall, generally?
Sure. I will. I will. You gain that.
Okay, so on the rating as well.
Thank you, that was.
And then number 19 is actually to approve CAVVR demonstrational classroom proposal. Any questions or attention on that?
I'm hanging here because that was my two, so.
Looks like none. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. And then, item 20, we have a list of personnel recommendations. Any questions or concerns? Not fully consent agenda, but this is to be accepted next week. Any questions or concerns on the list, definitely? Is it a separate list? We have separate lists on that.
One back the packet for next half, one for our next meeting.
That's right. There's one for your meeting, your call meeting that happens immediately after next meeting, and then there's...
I was asking.
Yeah. And in the big list, it's for... Okay, great. So we're referring just the list that is to have for next week. Sounds like a, here it is.
It's a long list.
Okay. If there is nothing else, then we'll adjourn this call meeting and move on to our work session.
We just don't...
No, the call meeting.
Call meeting.
This is our work session. The call meeting is a fun one, so it's, okay. Okay. We will... Do you have your agenda? The first, sorry. So we will call this meeting to order. This is a call meeting of the Clark County School District. Thank you all for being here. Dr. Meech, you have this roll call. Yes. Mr. Davis, here. Ms. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Worthy.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Bybee.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Dr. Nance.
Here.
Our first item is to amend and or adopt the agenda. Yes. The agenda, we can see if I can edit.
I will prepare the draft agenda.
Whoever, so Worthy, second. Ms. Davis, thank you very much. Any questions or concerns around the agenda?
I think we have been in conference in the back.
Did you see it, please?
No.
That's for the work sessions. Yeah, it should be.
We didn't get any printed ones.
Right. So we have a motion and second, all in favor of Dr. Miss Agenda. Any opposed? Thank you. The, we have a number of action items. The first action item is to approve K8 English Language Arts curriculum adoption. Dr. Meech.
Mr. Bybee, thank you, board members. We presented this curriculum need to do last week. I won't read, present the curriculum adoption recommendation, other than to say that we believe that it's critical that we have this adoption happen. The real conversation was around the payment structure for the board and... Thank you. So I mentioned this verbally last week, but I just wanted to share and write in with the board. There's three options that the board has. The first is a lease option. And what we're trying to do, what I tried to do in this chart is to give you an advantage and disadvantage to each of the three options. With the lease option, it protects the district's cash flow, if you will, in terms of our ongoing cash flow. The disadvantage is that the district would have to pay interest. The overall interest on that lease for 24 months would be $80,000. The second option is to use fund balance. There will be, the advantage is that there's no need to borrow funds. We currently have a fund balance at 18% compared to the fiscal year 19 budget. The recommended level for fund balance is 15% per state. And it is an appropriate one-time cost. When you use fund balance, it should be for a one-time cost. It will reduce the amount of reserve funds. And it's important to know that when we track our cash flow for next year, there will, there will be reflected deficit on our cash flow documents that Mr. Hamlin presents, because we've already constructed the fiscal year 19 budget. There's, we have to have some way to demonstrate that we've used fund balance. The third option is to reduce the existing fiscal year 19 budget and to then go into a, another reduction of operational costs for fiscal year 20. The advantage is the budget is balanced right now, so we know where we can find the funds. The disadvantage is that to balance the fiscal year 19 budget, we've already reduced the operational budget by 5%. It would be pretty devastating for our operational budget to be cut by another $1.75 million. So our recommendation is to use fund balance for this curricular, for curricular adoption. It's a total of $2.75 million. We would use, we have a textbook adoption budget of $900,000. We would use $500,000 of it from fiscal year 18, $500,000 from fiscal year 19, that will be the $1 million we're using. Leave us with the remaining $1.75 million. The total cost is $2.75 million. We would use $500,000 from fiscal year 18, an additional $500,000 from fiscal year 19.
Since we have, since we have a close down 18, you're speaking of using 18.
Yes, ma'am. So we would use 18 upon if you decide to approve this, this evening. The expenditure would then earmark $500,000 for fiscal year 19.
So financially, that is a score. And what are we spending this money on? Are we getting written materials, textbooks? What is the score? And are we front-loading, ordering some things in 18 and then the rest in 19? But, and my second question following up on that is, if we were spending this money, we would be amending the 19 budget as well, showing a deficit, right?
You would use fund balance on your cash flow documentation. It will show that there's a deficit, because that's how you have to, you have to demonstrate it on your cash flow sheet. But you would not be in a deficit, you would be using fund balance. So your, the fiscal year 19 budget will still be balanced. To answer your first question in terms of what are we receiving, last week in the presentation, we showed that there will be classroom libraries provided for every student and every classroom teacher, based on their reading ability level. They also create a baseline assessment tool that's tied back to those reading and literature tools that is provided to each classroom teacher.
So a lot of this is material content?
It's all materials. And it's text-rich. And so, what we mean by text-rich is that there are multiple books provided to young people at their reading level. And so, within a classroom setting, instead of having some kids go to a different place because they're reading at a different level, the teacher will have access to multiple levels of reading materials, depending on the ability of the student.
And so beyond, beyond, obviously, books are good for a while, and then they also need to be updated. So beyond these, the initial two years of the big libraries and each classroom, what, how do we maintain supporting what we built?
So, one thing that we're working on right now, and I think we talked about it actually in the fiscal committee, the financial committee meeting today, is looking at our five-year textbook adoption cycle. It's really important for us from a fiscal standpoint to construct a cycle where we can look at and project when these costs are going to come up again, just, just to be proactive. And so, we'll put ELA now on the five-year cycle, and we will come back in five years to replenish or refresh what you're purchasing or considering purchasing this year. So it's really about being disciplined and having a cycle, not only from a curricular standpoint, for teachers to know when curriculums are going to be revised again, but it's also a financial tool for the board to know when a large adoption like literacy or math is coming up.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, you raised a good point about, you know, the cycle of, of, of adoption of curriculum. Because, you know, back in the 90s when I was actually teaching, that was standard. And then, I guess, went to recession and then all this kind of thing. I don't even know, are they even, is, in the state of Georgia, are they even talking cycles of textbook adoptions now, or is every school district on their own, or?
I think now every school district's on their own. There was a time period where the entire state adopted a certain curricular area at a certain time. When the recession ended, it became, and every school district's on their own issue. And so that's why we're really working hard to develop our own cycle, so we can project and prepare at that time.
And, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Just kind of a follow-up. But anyway, you know, the, the one thing that I'm still trying to wrap my mind around this is, you know, being a charter school system, I mean, we should be responsible for ourselves. And, and the proof is, is in putting in terms of how we perform. On the other hand, you know, you've got the state still kind of like the mountains testing, you know, saying, you know, this is, this is a measurement that we're using. How in the world do we mesh a state-of-the-art curriculum that's been developed, you know, for, for school systems to adopt with what our legislators are mandating and, and I just don't know how the two mesh together.
They mentioned that they're both aligned to the Common Core State standards. So it's a standards-driven curriculum that ties back to not only the Common Core State standards, but Georgia standards in particular.
We did this a little bit backwards. I have the conversation before, we had a motion. But we have a recommendation for our superintendent to, to approve the K8 English Language Arts curriculum adoption. Is there a motion?
I move that except for superintendent's recommendation.
And the second? Thank you, Mr. Worthy and Ms. Ellis. Any other questions, concerns?
I would like to include in the motion the actual financial funding for this, to be very, very specific where it's coming from. Because we were given three alternatives, and one alternative is a little bit of a mesh.
The recommendation, yeah, that's a great point. The recommendation was to use the fund balance for funding of the CLA adoption, and that should be reflected in the, in the motion from Mr. Worthy and Secretary Ms. Ellis. Thank you.
And I would like the exact amount and the fund, funding source, yes.
Well, I made the motion to Dr. Meech. You've already mentioned that all of the amounts would be.
But I think it should, I don't know.
And the minutes didn't reflect all of that.
Our, our policy has been requested to, anytime we approve the expenditure of funds, to have clarity where they're coming from. And it should be part of the motion.
Would you like to restate it, or would you like it just reflected in the minutes?
We stood.
You know, to be able for me to vote on something, I would need to know where the funds are coming from.
Sure. Mr. Worthy, would you mind re stating the, the motion, and specifically where the paying for it's going to come from?
Yes. I move that except superintendent's recommendation to use fund balance to pay for the K8, I can't recall what they like, say.
DLA curriculum adoption.
And the amount of $1.75 million. But that's not what the superintendent said.
May I, may, may I?
Please, please.
I think the motion should, if I may.
Sure.
The motion should state that $1 million of the adoption will come from general funds. The additional $1.75 million will come from fund balance. So there's two different funding sources. $1 million is from the general fund, $1.75 million is from fund balance.
And even to be more specific, $500,000 from the general fund is Y18, and $500,000 is F19.
Of the $1 million coming from general funds, $500,000 is from fiscal year 18, $500, $500,000 is from fiscal year 19.
So the motion could state that there are three funding sources.
Okay. I move that except superintendent's recommendation, fund the K28, EOA, I mean, what else? Now, you said $1 million from general, general funds.
And of the $1 million fiscal, $500,000 is from fiscal year 18, $500,000 is from fiscal year 19.
$500,000, I mean, $500,000, which is a half billion for...
Fiscal year 18.
18. And $500,000 for fiscal year 19. And the remaining amount is what?
$1.75 million.
$1.75 million from the fund balance. That's the motion, and it's already been set.
Great. So that's the motion. We have it seconded by Ms. Ellis.
Discussion.
Discussion, absolutely. And I just wanted, for clarity, a second, and this may be for Larry, but by using the fund balance to exempt approximately, one part is that bring us down from 18% down to...
In the mid-16%.
Mid-16, yeah.
Thank you. So we still in good shape for...
I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, I, I, I can get your ass to voice it.
And this is for one year? This is for fiscal year 19?
Yes, ma'am.
And then 20 will be an additional $2.75 million?
$2 million.
Okay. This is a five-year cycle. So this is an upfront, four, five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hence why we have on there is an appropriate one-time cost. It's paying for the adoption at one time. That's why it's a real use of fund balance.
I propose to use fund balance for general.
Annual, for annual, yes.
Thank you. Craig, go ahead.
I just have to have just a question. In terms of the $500,000 for 2019, do we, we're going to pay them upfront, right, for this product? So I'm not sure how you...
We're actually behind from a purchasing standpoint. And we want to make sure that the material, all the materials are here by July 30th, so teachers can have them in their classrooms, ready to go. We're, they're, they're actually waiting on us to, to make this, to go through this process right now. And so that's why it's appropriate to use fiscal year 18 and 19. It's really, in the world textbooks, this is not ahead of time to get the order going. You have to purchase it now.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm, I'm just trying to think. We haven't even developed a budget yet for 2019, have we?
Yes.
Yeah, that's...
That's called 18, 19, that's a lot of shame. 19.
Yes, ma'am.
Lord, with everyone.
So we have a motion to approve the K8 DLA curriculum adoption, paying for it $1 million from general funds, $500,000 from 18, $500,000 from 19, and $1.75 from fund balance, which have been seconded as well in pre-discussion. Any other final discussion points? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is, actual item is to approve the CCSD fiscal year 19 budget.
Mr. Bybee, board members, we've had two board presentations, there have been three community presentations on the board on the budget. I'm not sure we get what has been stated in the past, but we're pleased to present to you a balanced budget. The finance committee also received some very encouraging news that we're trimming in a positive manner for this current fiscal year, which will actually, as proven to the last conversation, is actually adding on, adding to the fund balance because we're trimming in a positive way. We believe that this, this budget is... We believe that this budget is focused over more in class size, which again helps school-dependent children. We're really, really pleased with the great presentation.
Thank you. Any recommendations?
Recommendations for the board to approve our fiscal year 19 budget.
Thank you. Good, great. So moved. Moved to approve the CCSC fiscal year 19 budget.
That's correct.
Second. Second by Ms. Davis.
Next is Charles.
Charles. Second by Charles Gordon. Thank you so much. Any questions?
I just want to mention, there have been any changes to the budget since the presentation last week? And were there any changes from the public appearance to the presentation?
Any questions?
The most, to answer that question, if not, I think the most interesting conversation we had was with some coaches from one of our two high schools regarding costs in the budget for transportation for student athletes during the summer. And we were able to have that conversation and discuss it. And we thought that we came to, there was a concern that all the money not be in the budget, and we were able to make sure that the money wasn't in the budget. It was always there, it's just it was communicated at the school.
And there were any changes to the nonprofit? I don't know if you have a question, but that's cool. If you can clarify, I would be happy to hear your answer.
So no changes from last week or from times that it was quite a public concession?
No. If I, if I am reading, again, I have to take what I've been presented. The only nonprofit that had, there has been a nonprofit that had made a bust of the school district. I don't know if that's what you were referring to, but Family Connections, Community and Schools had made a $200,000 request of the school district to help pay for site coordinators. Was that maybe what you were referring to? Okay. And there was a, the question, the question was, have we adjusted our fiscal year 19 budget to address that request? The answers we have are candidly at this point in juncture of the development, but it would be difficult for us to do so. I think it would be more prudent for us to let enrollment happen, take a look at our class sizes after Labor Day. If there's something we can do to contribute to Family Connections, Communities, and Schools. Once we know where all of our class sizes are, we've met needs and that space, and we also have determined that we have no means to hire our own counselors, then we can have a consideration conversation around who we invest into that nonprofit. I came to the school district very enthusiastic and happy and excited about having Family Connections, Community and Schools in our school district, but when given the charge of either having $200,000 given to the nonprofit or keeping the $200,000 and ensure they have more our class sizes and/or we hire our own counselors, I think that would be a very important conversation to have at the board level. But no, we have not made that adjustment place in the request.
Thank you for that, Craig.
Along the same lines, Dr. Mays, have we been able to assess the effectiveness of the community and school program?
You know, as a nonprofit that really does a amazing job and help us, we have received information from the executive director, and it's been very positive information. It's not our program to evaluate its effectiveness. It's a nonprofit that we partner with. We're very pleased with the partnership. And based on the data that has been provided by Family Connections, Communities, and Schools, it's been favorable.
You know, I guess, you know, if I could follow up, like we had the discussion about Calipol.
We're just going to, currently, we're talking about the CCSC 19 budget. Is it relevant to the new budget?
Well, I mean, we've got an item that's been left off, you know, or not left off, that's not included. And so I don't know, did we discuss that? Or are there...
Left off the budget?
Well, not left off, it was not included in the question.
Which item is? Which what, which item?
Well, we're talking about Communities and Schools.
So, so let's just be clear. So Community, Family Connections, Communities, and Schools, I appreciate the way Dr. Nas has described it, is a nonprofit that is not a part of the school system. They made a request for district funds. Our first priority is to make sure that we have funded and we are staffing the program for our school system and our students. If we have the ability to make a donation of $200,000 to a nonprofit, then that is something the board will have to discuss. I would just be, I would also ask you to think about what precedent you would be setting. There's a lot of nonprofits that have started out that would, that also help and work with the school system. So here's the precedent that you have to think about. What if Books for Keeps fall, find themselves in a tough spot one year? Will you make concessions and find dollars in the budget to help Books for Keeps? It's a very worthy and good program, and it works with our schools directly. That's the precedent that you have to think about. That's, but I think that's down the road. The first, the first component of this is that the request for funding has come at a juncture where our budget is prepared for you to act on this evening. I think what we have, we have to do is make sure that we have the funds to ensure that our program is functional and functioning well. If after the midterm and after we have determined there's no other means, then I think there is room for consideration. That would be my recommendation.
If I may, it's really a moving point. Two of its laws, Georgia constitution, for donations to taxpayer funds and non-profit corporations, no matter how.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we have a motion on the floor to approve budget. We have a second, great discussion. In front of this discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion, actually, passes, thank you. The next item is to approve the fiscal year 19 military.
Part of the budgeting process is to set the military for the fiscal year 19. That recommendation, we said it actually was. I'm looking at, that is our recommendation for the I-5 military, which is, is...
Worthy, is there a second? Ms. Davis, thank you very much. Any questions around military? Uh, taken care of. Any all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is to approve surplus technology, sales surplus technology items.
Mr. Bybee, per policy DO, disposition of that is school property disposal procedures. The states of the board shall have the authority to sell any unservicable or surplus property at his discretion. Before any sale, you know, disposal, if main of the property, an estimate of current worth over $1,000, $1,000 of course shall adopt a resolution declaring the property is no longer necessary for purposes and authorize the superintendent to conduct the sale in or disposal. And then again, it goes on to say that the board shall reserve the right to sell surplus property at private sale. We have declared that we have computers that are no longer necessary for some purposes. We have found a buyer that would like to buy those laptops and talking with our technology leadership, the last time we distributed and sold laptops, it actually became a problem for the school system that the school districts logos and ring on those laptops. And furthermore, it's difficult to have updated software on those tools and those devices. And so many community members who purchased those computers felt that it was really a way that was not as profitable as it appeared to be. We think that this is a much more prudent direction. Our recommendation is to sell the surplus computers.
Thank you very much. Do you have recommendations or motion? Motion to sell the surplus property, I just seconded by Ms. Ellis. Very much, any questions? Thank you.
It was 215 devices, either DLR or HEB, 215.
And they're going to be sold at fair market value?
We, we are making a profit from the sale to a company. Then they, whatever they do with the device, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for putting out the discussion question. Why this is on our agenda, why as we were talking about it. Any questions? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Great, thank you. We also received a list of personal recommendations.
And Mr. Bybee, that all of this is what we are asking you to act on this evening. You remember a month ago, we stated that this is the time of the year where there's a lot of motion. So you see that list. Not to say that one hire is important than the other, but we did make a commitment to Wood Davis School Community that we would have a recommendation for them this evening. I think it's important to note before I give the recommendation that I recall that as I was transitioning last year, we were making principal hires as late as late June. And so the fact that we're able to make a final recommendation by June 7th is something that Ms. Duke and her team should be commended for. We are recommending the hire of Dr. Daniel McGuire for the principalship of Wood Davis Elementary School. He recently concluded his service at Westside Elementary School in Marietta City School System prior to being at Westside, which is a very good school, it's an high-achieving school. He worked in an urban setting in DeKalb. And so he brings a wealth of experience. He's a veteran principal with a terminal degree. We're really, really pleased that he has chosen us and he went through the process. He has expressed a deep commitment to Wood Davis School Community, and we're looking forward to serving that community for many years.
Thank you for that. Is there a motion to approve the personal recommendations?
Zulu.
Great. Davis, thank you very much. The second, thank you, as well. Any questions or...
Yeah, I just, I didn't want to compliment, you know, the staff, you know, the resources. Because one of the concerns that had been expressed to me by Wood Davis teachers and parents was that because of the lateness of it, that the selection process may have been very, very limited. So it seems like that that was not the case. And so I'm very pleased.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, our final item is to adjourn this meeting. Motion to adjourn, Ms. Davis, seconded by Dr. Knox. All in favor? Thank you very much.